Okay, we're calling the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone can see us and hear us clearly out there. I'd like to welcome you to the Village of Royal Palm Beach Council Meeting for August 20th at 6:30. I'd like to start off with you to stand and join us in the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America. To the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Okay, let me get some. Okay, Diane, please let the record show that all members of council are physically present even though this is a virtual meeting.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
How do you do that? Okay, so don't talk like, don't talk it normal. Okay, we'll adjust. Okay. With that, at this point, I'd like to make some administrative announcements since this is a virtual meeting, and hopefully we've got many citizens and as well as applicants participating remotely. We've been following this format as we have entered into the COVID-19 scenario, and we've been adjusting as we've gone along. Tonight, we've got a different setup because we've been having audio problems in the past, and hopefully this gets us beyond that, but we had to make some adjustments to do that. So I'm going to ask anyone who's participating remotely to please ensure that, to eliminate background noise as much as possible. For each item on today's agenda, the meeting organizer, the village manager, will recognize you in order to make comments and questions. When speaking, please be sure to identify yourself so that we know who is speaking. For applicants, or representatives of applicants, will be muted by staff until their agenda item is called. Once called, the applicant will be unmuted to make their presentation and answer any questions of the council. When your item is completed or voted on, you will, it's up to you if you want to continue with staying in the meeting or leave at that point. For members from the public, public comments will be solicited during each agenda item. Once we ask for a public comment on a specific item, please click the raise hand item on your, on your screen and go to webinar in order to make public comment. The reading organizer will announce the speaker by stating their name and unmute their audio to allow up to three minutes of public comment. When called, please state your name, as I said before, and your address for the record, and proceed with your comments, speaking clearly into your device during your allotted time. Couple other important notes. Before individually identified, all members of the public will be muted, so you won't, you won't be able to say anything until we actually, you raise your golden hand, you go to webinar, you raise your hand and get recognized. And please do not use chat function. Chat function will not be monitored for this meeting. So as I mentioned, the way to get recognized is to raise your hand for the agenda item to speak on. Also, as a reminder, the meeting can be viewed live on Comcast Local Channel 18 or streamed at www.royalpalmbeach.com/youtube. I think that covers the registration components. With that, we're going to move into the agenda. All right, first item on the agenda is to receive reports. And I guess I'm going to start with Selena.
Good evening, everyone. Just right off real quick, as we start to go back into the school year, the Palm Beach County Library System is offering many different options. They are also doing a free homework online session, so if you go to plibrary.org, you'll find the information. You do have chatting with kids about online, since now everybody has that. And then they also do have any ebooks and audiobooks on site as well. So if you go to the website, pbclibrary.org, you'll find all of that. A Palm Beach County Community Service Department is contracted with Legal Aid Society of Palm Beach County to provide county residents with free legal representation and assist in facing eviction. Their phone number is (561) 655-8944 at extension 328. What was kind of neat is Royal Palm Beach resident Julie Leves, featured in the Sun Sentinels, what I love about the city that they call home. She's a resident of Royal Palm Beach for 22 years, and she said that Royal Palm Beach is the best of both worlds, where suburban meets rural, so beautiful parks with lots of people of all ages, background of color, rocking out to some great music. So it was really cool for her to feature, and they featured that on there. And congratulations to Village Attorney Jennifer Ashton and Middy Bernard, who've been awarded the AV rating, so only lawyers with the highest standards and greatest professional ability. They also join our attorney Keith Davis in this distinction, so congratulations. And that concludes my report.
Okay, Richard.
My report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yeah.
Good evening. Our League of Cities Board Meeting was held yesterday at Riviera Beach City Marina, and it's like we're, we're doing here, we had a mix of both in-person and also online. The agenda included an update from Palm Beach County on their Syringe Evil Exchange Program, a presentation of our League of Cities Legislative Awards to State Senator Bobby Powell and State Representative Rick Foff for their supportive of cities in bills like Water Quality Control Act, Everglades Protection Act, and several other bills that were definitely positive impacts on, on our community. Other agenda items included a report on the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, which was absolutely fascinating with all those people on a Zoom meeting. When we got to the business session, we approved seven resolutions and the slate of new Florida League of Cities officers for the coming league year. The new president of Florida League of Cities is Orlando City Councilman Tony Ortiz. The new first vice president is Lakeland City Councilman Phil Walker. And the second vice president is St. Lucy City Councilwoman Jolene Caraballo. The president's new, the new president's priority is a continuation of home defense with a bit of a spin on it. The staff is going to put together what they've called a toolbox to help us engage with citizens, to get them engaged with state legislators as specific preemption bills come up, and as, as need be, to get them involved and to help us maintain our role. On August 10th, we had our first education advisory, another mix of in-person and also online. Turned out extremely well. Not only we do the organizational matters that we always do in August, the board, which included selection of a new board chairperson, who is Julie Highsmith. And the new vice chair for the coming school year is Lisa Ryan. Everybody agreed that we'll certainly continue in this, this mixed mode as long as we're allowed virtual meetings. And it was a pleasant surprise to me that we were able to actually have a school board member, the regional superintendent, and six of the seven principals do reports at the meeting. So I think everyone agreed that the Education Advisory Board is going to be particularly useful as we are dealing with COVID, with all of the changes, with the opening of schools and the evolution of that whole process. One of the things that the, has provided is a communications platform to reach out, and hopefully it'll, it'll be even more effective under these circumstances. So we are looking forward to that, to the next meeting, which will actually spotlight or showcase our high school as we do at our first full meeting of the year. That meeting will be held on September 14th. Again, as you were, as the mayor was just mentioning, the board meeting can be viewed on a local channel, Channel 18 Comcast. So we invite everybody to do that, especially with breaking news being a fairly frequent occurrence here with the schools. The last thing I want to mention is Commons Park continues with, I think we're up to our 18th week of providing food to families that need it. One of the best features is the volunteers. We keep getting new volunteers just about every Wednesday. This past Wednesday, we wound up with a new team. This team came from Palms West Hospital. And so their hospital staff, five to 10 individuals, all wearing red shirts, probably. And they help bag oranges and help load 700 cars and trucks as, as we normally do with a wide variety of produce from, from feeding South Florida. Once again, the village staff, the parks, the rec staff have done an outstanding job in organizing this and supporting it. So I want to reach out and thank them. concludes my report.
Thanks for that update, and I just want to reiterate, we're very thankful to all of the organizations that have volunteered to support us in the food program. And I'm especially glad that I know for a while that the folks at Palms West wanted to get involved in this, and they finally got their turn, and we're glad to have our friends at Palms West. That's it?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. So Planning and Zoning has two openings right now. The Planning and Zoning Commission meets on the Tuesday of the month. All meetings are held at the Village Meeting Hall. If you are a resident and are interested and like to volunteer to serve and have expertise on this local governing board, you can pick up an application at the village clerk's office or download it from the website. Applications are due September 9th, and we'll consider the applications at the September 17th meeting. And then the other thing I'd like to report is that our new capstone assisted living facility and memory care community is the first center of its kind to install new sanitation solutions. So it is installing state-of-the-art sanitation solutions to help its community reach safer and healthier normal. A walk-through cleanse portal that uses far UVC light to sanitize clothing and personal items, and two air sanitizing troffers in key staff areas to continue, continuously cleanse and circulate the air. So not only do we have a wonderful new assisted living facility and memory care facility coming online, hopefully the end of this month, but they're already considering COVID and trying to get ahead of the curve, so that's pretty special. And that's all I have tonight.
Jan, have they opened yet? Are they, have they, are they taking folks yet, or they disrupted because of the pandemic?
I think they're delayed, but I don't. Yeah, I don't think they have a official start date yet.
Okay, thanks.
Keep watching that.
That it?
That's it. Thank you.
Right.
No report, Mayor.
Eve?
Just to advise the council, as of last week, the state has extended the ability to conduct these virtual meetings through the end of September for all meetings. Back in a couple weeks ago, they extended it for the TRIM hearings, but now it has also been applied to all meetings through the month of September until October 1st. So it seemed to keep doing it month by month, but at least he didn't wait until the end of the month to let us know.
Okay.
I will. Thank you. That's my report.
All right, so that concludes our report this evening. With that, do we have any petitions?
No petitions today.
Okay, I'm closing the floor to the meeting to receiving petitions. The, okay, now, do we have any advance comments from the public on non-agenda items or agenda items on the consent agenda?
No, Mayor, we don't.
Okay. Do we have any hands raised for non-agenda items or for comments on items on the consent agenda?
No, we don't. The hand just went down.
It went up and down?
Well, it was up, but it just went down. It was, and I thought the person, they want to speak on one of the agenda items, so they're, they'll wait.
Okay, so they're waiting. All right, then with that, then I will close a public comment on non-agenda items, and items on the consent agenda, and ask Diane if she could give us the consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor, I will. One, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of June 18, 2020, council budget workshop meeting of July 7, 2020, and council regular meeting of July 16, 2020. Two, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the fifth addendum to independent contractor agreement between the Village and Early Childhood Adventures LLC for the provision of additional early childhood educational programs to the community at large. Three, approval and authorization for the mayor to execute the fifth addendum to the Law Enforcement Service Agreement binding between the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office and the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Four, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into agreement with Property Works, the lowest responsive responsible bidder, in an amount of $48,878.56 for Parks Maintenance Service. Five, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the first addendum to the Food and Beverage Services Agreement with Sweet Cravings Cafe LLC to postpone the commencement date of the agreement in response to COVID-19 to January 1, 2021, or whenever Commons Park opens at full capacity, whichever occurs first.
All right, so let's hold on to January calls. Is that it? Okay. All right. No comments from members on council? I'll look for a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that consent agenda item, the consent agenda was approved, 5-0. Okay. All right, we'll move now to the regular agenda, regular agenda all one. There's a public hearing to consider application 20-65, an application by HCC Royal Palm Beach 2 LLC in Resolution 20-18 confirming a council action. Applicant is seeking site plan modifications and building and landscape architectural approval for approximately 1.56 acre parcel of land located on the northwest corner of Southern Boulevard and Cypress Head Avenue. And who will be speaking on this, Bradford? This is a, all right, before we do that, this is a quasi judicial item, so we need to have folks who want in.
Yes, sir. Is anybody other than Bradford going to be testifying? Is there an applicant?
There's no one here for the applicant?
Yes, the applicant is online.
Okay, so they have to get someone in online.
And I just, what is, who is the applicant, what's the applicant's name that's going to be speaking?
Jennifer Morton will be presenting.
Okay.
Tarek Zunick is the engineer, and Jimmy Holloway is the applicant owner.
All right, if the three individuals testify for the applicant, as well as Mr. O'Brien, if you'll raise your right hands, do you two swear or affirm under penalties of perjury that your testimony to the village council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Oh, I have them muted. Hang on a second. Sorry about that. There'll be Ethan Mann from the neighborhood will be speaking too. Let me get all these. Where Jennifer Morton go? There she is. Jennifer, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Right.
Do you hear the attorneys where you in?
Yes.
Hey. I don't, okay, there he is. Tarek Zunick, the engineer, did you hear the attorneys where you in?
Yes, I did.
Keith, the, the resident, do they, does, will be making a comment for the homeowners association. Do you need to hear from them too?
They're, if they are just making public comments on behalf of the HOA, they do not need to be sworn in for that.
Okay, then that'll be it.
Then I just need to ask for any ex parte disclosures from the council at this point.
Yes, I, I had a meeting with the applicant and the village manager on this subject.
I did as well.
All right, that looks like. I spoke with the applicant a while ago about this, and I received a letter from the homeowners association, so I don't know if that counts, but those are my contacts.
And I have a letter too.
All right, then with those disclosures on the record, Mayor, we can proceed with the item.
Okay, before we proceed, I just wanted to put on record that the council, as indicated, did receive a letter regarding the regular agenda item number one from Ethan Mann, who said he's president of Park Central HOA at Cypress Key Homeowners Association. I was going to ask the village manager the comment, but hold your comments till after. If he's going to be commenting, you may as well let him make his comments before you ask your comment on that, okay?
Yes, Mayor.
And with that, Bradford, where are you?
I'm here. Can everybody see my slide?
I can see your slide, yes.
Perfect, very good. The applicant is requesting site plan modification, building and landscape architectural approval for a 1.56 acre commercial portion of the 35.23 acre mixed-use development located on the, located east of Crestwood Boulevard and on the northwest corner of Cypress Head Avenue and Southern Boulevard. The applicant is proposing changes to the previously approved invested site plan for the commercial component of the project. The applicant is proposing to convert the approved 120-student and 12,500-square-foot daycare facility within Building C to a 12,100-square-foot medical professional office. This will result in a reduction of 400 square feet. In addition to change the use, the building footprint is being modified, and the parking lot has been adjusted to accommodate the proposed building. Parking lot and the access driveway have been revised to address the new use in building. The minor adjustment of the driveway was resulted in the removal of an on-street parking space, and the revised parking lot has added 40 spaces to meet the increased parking requirement of the office use. In reviewing this petition, village staff considered conformity with Chapter 26 of the village's Code of Ordinances, specifically the proposed site meets the requirements for the mixed-use development in the building district as it relates to parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, landscape plans and landscape setback, maximum building height, and maximum commercial floor area ratio. Landscape setback again, parking. Here is the location of the parcel in relation to the other parcels and buildings on the site. This is, this here is a blow-up of the site plan. As you can see, the approval for the new configuration of the ingress, ingress egress point lines up with the parking lot across the street where they have, it currently is located here, which is a shift to the west. Here's some of the architecture for the buildings. This architecture will be consistent with the architecture of the other buildings on the site. Here's an illustration of the landscape plan, which meets the village's landscape requirements. Overall, the proposed site plan is in conformance with the village's requirements for the amended mixed-use development building district. Planning and zoning commission considered the application on August 11, 2020, and recommended approval by vote of four to zero, with the condition that the applicant make contact with the homeowners association and attempt to alleviate the HOA's concerns over the relocated access drive, and I'll let the applicant speak to the results of that meeting. Again, staff is recommending approval of this application. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you and give the screen back to you, Ray.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. Now, would the applicant like to make comments?
Um, yes, I've got a short presentation prepared. If I could, um, hear my screen.
I gave it to you.
Okay. Can, can you see it?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, and you see the PowerPoint, okay. Um, again, as Bradford mentioned, we're requesting site plan approval to replace the 12,500-square-foot daycare with a 12,100-square-foot medical office. This just gives you some.
Hold on.
Hold on a minute.
We can't see the PowerPoint.
Your PowerPoint's not on. We see your screen.
Oh, that one's.
You're controlling it.
It shows, it shows on the bottom toolbar, your PowerPoint presentation at the very bottom.
Okay.
All right, one more over.
To the left, one more over.
One more over. Go down right there.
Okay.
Hit that.
It's saying that it's up. You know what? Let me move it. I think because I have multiple screens, I need to move it.
Or minimize that one. There it is.
That's where, that's the screen I want to use. How do I get that screen right here?
Minimize that.
There it is. That's it.
I apologize. I, you know what I can do? If you can see the screen, I can go through the.
Hit F5. Hit F5, it'll start from the beginning.
Okay, so, um, again, this is an aerial, just giving some context to the project, the Cypress Key project. This is a copy of the approved site plan. The project is a mixed-use development, meaning the, there's residential and commercial, all approved as one overall project. It's 35 acres in size. It includes both single-family homes and townhouses as well as 125,000 square feet of commercial uses. You can see from the approved site plan that the commercial uses are located along Southern Boulevard and, along Southern Boulevard. We've got some retail office and restaurant. Each of these uses have an access, have their access point onto Park Central. And this is the approved site plan as it exists today. The subject property is the daycare highlighted here in yellow. It's approved for 210 children. Again, our access point, as it exists today, lines up with the townhouses across the street. This is the proposed site plan. The medical and professional office is located here. It's 12,500 square feet. We're reducing it from the approved site plan by 400 square feet. We have 75 parking spaces. We meet all of the landscape setback buffering requirements. We also meet the connectivity. This is the, the Congress Living Facility to our east, and we have the connection all the way through to the sidewalk along Park Central. And you can see that the new access point lines up with the driveway across the street versus lining up with the townhouses. This was just an animation.
It's all clear. That, that, what you've shown me, the alignment is, is that goes out to the intersection where eventually you have a light.
Right, this, this lines up with the access point across the street, and these are the townhouses. So this access point was moved over here with the new and approved site plan.
Okay.
Um, as Bradford mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval of the project. Laura McCollum, who's project manager, spoke with Ethan Mann about the proposed site plan. Um, and their desire is to have, to move the access point over. And their desire is to have, to move the access point over to this driveway. But you can see there's a median divided entrance off of Southern Boulevard. And for traffic circulation and from an engineering perspective, it's better to have all the access points off of Park Central. It's currently approved today. It's always been shown there since the project was approved and we're simply making adjustments to it. That, um, just in conclusion, the proposed use is less intensive than the daycare use. We're reducing square footage, reducing trips, we're making the access align. Staff is recommending approval and planning and zoning is recommending approval. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Before we take comments from council, I'd like to open it up for public comment. And as mentioned earlier, we did have, we do have a letter that came in from the president of the HOA. And now, if he would like to comment, that would be the time.
Ethan, you're unmuted. You need to unmute yourself. There you go. Go ahead, Ethan. It's, you can, it's under public comment. Ethan, speak now.
My name is Ethan Mann. I live at 12029 Park Central in Royal Palm Beach. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, and I'm also the president of the HOA. And I've had a number of requests from our residents, especially people that live on Park Central, who are concerned about the increase in traffic on Park Central right in front of their townhomes. And we feel that a better entrance for the commercial development would be on, instead of on the east-west section of Park Central, on, a better location would be on the north-south section of Park Central that is direct access to Southern Boulevard. That would divert the commercial traffic off of, off of the residential section of Park Central and keep it on a section of Park Central where there is, are no residences, making it much safer for our residents, residents and children. And that's our, our, our basic reason and reason for wanting that entrance moved. And I guess we can't, we, we would request that the applicant change it to that location because it's a safety matter for less traffic on a residential road. And the engineering problems aren't that severe to move the entrance over there. When this plan was originally approved, when this plan was originally approved, there were no residents to object to it. So we couldn't have objected to it three years ago. And, um, I guess the final item is that the HOA actually owns these roads. And, um, we have to let the commercial properties use them, but we think it's not an unreasonable request to have the commercial people move the entrance around to the side to get the traffic away from the residential area. And thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for your comments, sir. I'm gonna ask the village manager to give us some context on this comment, on this situation.
I, you want to wait till we finish public comment? I do have somebody else that.
Oh, this, I'm sorry. I thought he was the only one. Do you have more public comment?
No, yeah, I have a Jesus Neves. Jesus, you've been unmuted. You can, you can speak now.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jesus Neves. I'm also a resident, 12037 Park Central. And I, uh, I'd like to agree with Mr. Ethan. I believe that if you look at the plans, the way they presented it, it shouldn't be a tremendous issue to move the entrance and exit of these commercials to the Crestwood area and to the entrance to Park Central instead of on our road. My personal, my townhome basis, right on Park Central. We have many children. They ride their bikes, ride their skateboards because right now it's really a private road. It belongs to us, the association. And I feel that putting people exiting from these businesses right into our private road per se is a safety issue for our children in our community. And that's the main reason why I think it would be a great idea that they can actually move this, uh, you know, this access and entrance to these businesses to the side and keep our children safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Do we have any other comment cards? Virtual comment cards?
No, I have no more hands are raised.
Okay, then. With that, I'll ask you just to comment.
Okay, the, um, look, yes.
Do you mind asking, if Bradford could put the diagram back up when you're doing it?
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Just so we have a visual, thanks.
Okay, let me give the Bradford the, back to the. Bradford is a panelist. Bradford, can you put that up now?
Yes, sir.
I just gave it to you. Picture.
Which one?
Thank you. Nope, that's a good one. I think that's, yep, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, to give a little bit of a history, the. Go ahead. Cypress Key development was done as one mixed-use development along with the commercial and the residential. The roadways are private roadways that are, that are owned by the association with a cost sharing between the commercial and the residential property owners for their maintenance. The concept by the developer was for there to be a signal at State Road 80 and their main entrance. And that is why that roadway is designed without, with minimal driveways and without a median cut in that driveway to turn left into that driveway to the west. The, the traffic study that was done to warrant the signals anticipated traffic coming from the commercial, coming from the townhomes, coming from Cypress Key, coming from the public shopping center and even coming from the condominium complex. And that was his desire for his mixed-use development. And that is, and that is why he got approval from the Department of Transportation to move the proposed signal that was supposed to be at Crestwood or at Cypress Key, Cypress Head Boulevard to the center of this project. And then that is why the, the project entrance roadway was designed to get the cars in and out off of Crestwood with ease and have the access that causes restrictions on, to, off the, the Park Central Road that runs east-west. There is sidewalks all along that roadway that provides a safe place for people to walk up and down that roadway on the other side of the parked cars. That roadway, as you know, is designed with on-street parking on both sides. It is, the roadway and anywhere in the roadway is not a safe place to play at all, mainly because of the, the volume that's anticipated and because of the on-street parking. If you remember the Park Central total development, which I don't know Bradford, if you have one, a plant, if you, if you have a diagram of the whole thing, it was designed with the townhomes having a fairly large park area just to the north of these townhomes here on Park Central Road. And that was kind of the common play area that was designed for this. I will say that, that the traffic signal needs to have enough trips at that intersection to warrant the traffic signal and for DOT to approve its installation. If for some reason, things completely change and, and the development, once it's developed, I think we have an obligation to the developer to allow them to finish developing out its commercial development. When that is all done and the property owner association who owns and will control that area, of course, consistent with the site plan, if there's some, for some reason, the, the signal doesn't go in because the trips don't come from the Publix or the condominium complex or Cypress, Cypress Head. I think considering that, that changes to the system, changes to the driveways would, I, I would, I think we would entertain that. But right now, because of the signal and the desire of the developer to have a signal there, and I think for the residents too, I think we should leave it as is. If that changes in the future, modifying things would not be a problem.
Okay. All right, thank you. Now, I'd like to open it up for questions, comments from members on council.
Richard. I guess my first question is for the applicant. I'm looking at the connectivity between the memory care assisted living facility and the medical office. And it's looking to me like this is a walkway, isn't it? It's not. The traffic is gonna be flowing from one to the other. Am I right in that? Because that's just the way it looks to me on the diagram.
Is she unmuted?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking.
I didn't see her.
Yeah, I'm not seeing her in there. There, and see if she's under attending, if she came back under attending.
If, if you don't mind, Richard, I can maybe take a stab at answering that question.
Okay, that's fine.
She's here, she's here. Jennifer, did you hear that question?
Yes, I did. That, um, it is a pedestrian connection between the two uses.
Okay, and then it looks like, you know, furthermore to connect to the west, I guess this is a future thing. Are they looking at, there's a median there. That, that's not gonna be designed to go through the, uh, the entrance way. Is it over to the west? Property there?
No, you're.
Okay, okay. That's, yeah, those were my concerns. Thank you. And, uh, I guess, I don't know if the next question is for Bradford or the village manager or Ray. Mr. Mann said that the engineering is not that big of a problem in switching from what's been approved to something that's off the entrance ways. Is, is that true? Is that accurate? Or, I mean, it's easy to say something, you could just do something and it's easy, but is that gonna lead to, you know, more stacking on the entrance way that could be problematic? Or is this something that's really just a, a simple fix of moving from one spot to the other? I mean, from now, what's being proposed looks to me like a favorable thing from the spot it previously was to the spot it is now. But what's the difficulty or what, what would be the problem in moving from where it's being proposed to right off the entrance way? I guess is my question.
The desire not to have it right off the entrance way was because of the anticipated traffic that was coming to that roadway and the signal that was proposed to be installed. And can, you, you don't want people to have to make decisions so close to a busy intersection. So the, the goal was to get them into the development around the circle and, and then they can go in which directions they wanted to go. Even to get into that driveway to the west, you have to go to the circle, go around it and then turn right into it. That's why there's no median cut in that, in that median on that roadway.
Okay, so the traffic flow, assuming the signal comes in like it's supposed to, is gonna be better without that entry right off the, the main roadway. Okay, thank you.
That is correct. And that's why I said if things change in the future and everything's built out and the, and for some reason, it, it doesn't work out to get a signal there, then, you know, considering changes, and I think we would look at making a change to the State Road 82 by limiting left turns out. If there's not gonna be a signal there in the long run, it would probably be, make sense to not allow the left turn out. And then you can, then you can reconfigure driveways with inside the site.
We, we will be working on trying to get that signal. But as Ray mentioned, if we don't, we have to have a Plan B, I guess, initially. Didn't see any hand, Jeff, go ahead.
Yes, I, I've got a question about the distance from the circle to the entrance to the medical office building parking lot. How, how far is that?
Who are you asking?
That's for anybody.
So, um, so I see a parallel parking space right here, which is 20 feet. So let's say 20 feet, 20 feet, 20 feet, you know, 65 feet.
So from the, from the circle.
Well, I'm, the park, there's 12 parking places along there. That's 120 feet. So I would say it's, I would say it's about 240, 250 feet, yeah. Less than 300, more than 250.
Okay, so from, from the circle, we got a stretch of about 250 feet of, of possible traffic there, right? And also circles, of course, we've heard a lot about them being, um, traffic control kinds of devices that slow traffic down. So hopefully, and they do work, it'll keep the speed down. So with the consideration of 250 feet of, of traffic and, and a traffic circle slowing the speed, I, I, I'm okay with leaving it the way it is at, at this point in time.
I have, yeah.
Salita, go ahead.
Bradford, can you go back to the other slide with it's the overall, the bigger picture, please? Thank you. Okay, so right now we have the assisted living facility on the far east side. Where is that entrance into that complex? Is it off of Park Central?
It is right here.
Okay, so they do have to go on that road, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, is that an issue now? Because it seems like cars are gonna be driving a lot further down that road than what we're, what the issue seems to be right now with the medical building and then doctors' offices, their hours are certain times of the day, which, you know, aren't gonna operate after a certain time. So is there a problem with the entrance to the senior living facility?
That's a difficult question to answer considering that the senior housing facility is not open and that it's essentially only construction traffic at this point in time.
So from the HOA perspective, and this might be a question for Mr. Mann because in your letter, you had stated that you're gonna be requesting similar entrance changes in the future. So all the commercial on the side that is parallel with Southern Boulevard all have entrances on that street on Park Central. So are those the concerns you're gonna have, that you're gonna come back and ask for all of those to be changed?
Yes, those, we are going to request that those three other entrances on Park Central be moved to Old Crestwood and to the access road onto Southern.
Okay, so it's not just this one part then, you're gonna, you got, the homeowners then have an issue with all the entrances on Park Central. Is that correct?
Correct. Would we think it's easy to move them off of Park Central and onto the access road and get most of the traffic off on the access road?
Well, but the, can, whatever's proposed just on the west side of the main entrance or the roundabout, there isn't an entrance in that way as, they're still gonna have to come through. I don't know where they would come off of if you're gonna change it. I understand.
They can come around the traffic circle and go back, back towards Southern and go into the entrance on, on heading south on the entrance road. There's one entrance there already. That's why I don't understand why on the east side, an entrance can't be made like that. It already exists on the west side.
I think the issue was is, and I'm not an engineer, traffic engineer, but because if you're coming in and you're making that right off of Southern Boulevard, is that the flow of the traffic, at least when you come around the roundabout and then head back south, that you do have time and traffic has time to dissipate before you have to make that turn. So I can understand the concern on that.
There's 250 feet of, of space to slow down. Nobody is gonna be coming up. They have to make a right-hand turn off of Southern. They're not gonna be going 45 miles an hour when they go down that entrance road.
No, I, I understand that. I'm just trying to clarify everything. And then my other question is, is because that road on the east side of where the senior living facility is going closer to Cypress Head, is that, if we have a controlled intersection at that main entrance now, are they going to close that opening off? And then Cypress Head residents are gonna have to come through? And then Cypress Head residents are going to have to come through Park Central to get out? No.
No, that would not be allowed.
Okay, okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Right, you want to say something?
You know, it's, I, I understand what the townhome people are saying about wanting all those driveways off, which is completely contrary to what the developers' idea was for this. And completely contrary to the, to the, the million dollars that the developer spent to, to have the center entrance fully signalized and a, and, and. With the, with access in each direction. But like I said, once this is built out, these commercial property owners are part of the owners' association and they, they're, they have, they have. They have to pay into the maintenance of this and I believe they have a voting right within that organization. So whatever that organization works out in the future. Once both sides are built.
Those are complete owned by the residential homeowners association. The commercial people have no ownership rights to the roads. They only have right to access the roads. Right, I don't want us to get into a debate about that here in this meeting. Okay, so. This is not a debate. Uh, any of the members in council?
I, I did have a question. Ray, you mentioned there was a plan for the park on the north side for the townhomes. Is that. Going to completion or is that still just a plan?
Built.
It's built, that is constructed. That is there.
It's there, okay.
And they're fairly large.
Okay.
Um, I, this is a question for Keith. At least my understanding is regardless of who owns the roads. Don't we have an approved site plan to where these things are, you know, the, whoever it is has a legal obligation to have those built at this point at these. At the drawing I'm looking at, isn't that a, a legal drawing that they have entitlements to have these things where they are at this moment?
That is correct. This is a, then this is an approved site plan and the request is for a, the modification to. Basically switch out the previously approved school now for the medical office, but yes, this entire thing is a previously approved site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, Selena? Nope. All right. Well, any, you want to make any last comments, Bradford?
No, sir.
Conversation, okay. All right, so we have the recommendation from staff, which means to approve the. The applicant to keep it as it was originally designed in the site plan. And at this time, we have any further. Members out in the public who want to speak on this agenda item, Ray?
I have, Jesus Navy's has his hand up again.
He spoke already, no?
Yes, he did.
A new, new court.
No, I have, I have no new ones, Mayor.
All right, I'm closing public comment on agenda item R one, and if there are no comments from council, I'll look for a motion to approve recommendations from staff.
I'll make a recommendation to approve regular agenda item R one.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that regular gender item R one is approved five zero. All right, agenda item R two is a public hearing to consider application one nine dash one two. Application by Watman Group Inc. An adoption of resolution number two zero dash one six confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking final plat approval for the plat of Crestwood North replat two. In order to allow for certain portions of the Crestwood North replat. To be subdivided to single-family lots to be consistent with the approved site plan for a development located at the. West quadrant of Crestwood Boulevard, M one canal. With that, Bradford, you're.
Oh, wait.
I believe I have it, Ray.
Oh, good, thank you.
I mean, if everybody can see my presentation, I'll go ahead and get started. This is an application for final plat approval to subdivide the northwest portions of the Crestwood North replat. Into single-family lots to be consistent with the approved site plan, land being platilized within the single-family residential zoning district. The plat conforms to the platting requirements of Village Code, more specifically, section twenty-two, twenty-four and twenty-six ninety-four. Given that the final plat contains all information as required by Village Code, section twenty-two, twenty-four, final plat requirements and Village Code, section twenty-six, eighty-six, per inch four. Site development standards, staff is recommending an approval of application thirteen twenty-two and, oh, I'm sorry, nineteen one twenty-four. And with that being said, I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor, and Ray, I'll give back the screen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant want to make comments?
Doug Murray, you're, you've been unmuted.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have a presentation. I think Bradford covered it. This is to approve the, the phase two, the remaining lots for the, the Crestwood development. It, it already has site plan approval, so this is just to be consistent with the, with the previously approved site plan. Um, but I'm here for any questions if you have them.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any comment cards from the public? Virtual comment cards?
I have no hands up, Mayor.
No hands up? Diane, did we receive any comments?
No, Mayor, no comments.
Oh, wait a minute, I do have, I have one hand, I'm sorry, one just went up. David Newweller?
Yes, Dave Newwiler here.
You have your hand up? Do you have a, a comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes, I, I do have a, a comment and a question. First off, I'm Dave Newwiler, I live at two eleven Monterey Way in Royal Palm Beach. I have a lot that adjoins Bellicera. And I'd like to thank Lennar for their work in maintaining the landscape buffer and hedge adjoining Saratoga Pines. During the time that that northwest quadrant of the plat had been returned to acreage. My question pertains to that buffer maintenance when the plat is restored and those adjacent lots are sold. And to be brief about it, the Bellicera HOA declaration. Says that the owners of those lots will be responsible for the maintenance, repair and replacement of the hedges. The hedges to be maintained between four and six feet. The concern is that the hedges will not be maintained because the homeowners have no easy access to them. So what's the maintenance plan moving forward?
Can the Watman Group respond to that question?
Uh, yes, I, I, yeah, I will say I can't specifically respond to that question, but if this gentleman could give his information. I can, I can certainly get back to him. I'd like the developer to get back to him.
Make sure that happens.
Okay.
Thank you for your, your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Dave, can you, can you email your information or do you information to me tomorrow at, uh, arligans@royalpalmbeach.com and I will get it to Doug?
Yes, yes, Ray, I'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night, everyone.
Any other hands raised? Going once? Going twice? Okay, at this time then I will close public comment for agenda item R two and ask comment from members on council. Saying none, then I'll look for a motion to approve agenda item R two.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item R two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R two was approved five zero. All right, agenda item R three is a public hearing for the second reading and adoption of ordinance number one zero zero three. Approving application one nine dash one two zero, an application of our center career. Seeking a change of land use designation for four parcels of land totaling approximately twelve point two eight acres. From the village's commercial land use designation to the village's multifamily low-density residential, residential located approximately a hundred and fifty feet north of. Approximately five hundred feet west of Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. And with that, Bradford, you're on.
Thank you, sir. Um, the applicant is seeking a large-scale future land use map amendment to change the land use designation for four parcels of land totaling approximately twelve point two eight acres of land. From commercial land use designation to the multifamily low-density residential land use designation. This site is currently vacant land. The applicant has indicated in their justification statement that the ultimate goal is to develop the property for a hundred townhouse dwelling units. In reviewing the proposed future land use map amendment, designating the parcels as multifamily low-density residential, village staff consider compatibility with adjacent land uses. Consistency with the village's comprehensive plan, whether the action requested will exacerbate any existing public facility capacity deficits in regards to the roadway network. Sanitary sewer, solid waste, drainage, pond of water, recreation, open space. The amendment is consistent with the traffic circulation element. With the sanitary sewer, solid waste. With the drainage, recreation and open space. Um, the applicant has provided a school capacity availability determination letter dated November fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Which concludes that, quote, "There will be a negative impact on the public school system and if the village council approves the amendment." The recommend, they recommend in order to address the school capacity deficit generated by this proposal or this proposed development. At the high school level, the property owner shall contribute one hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars to the school district of Palm Beach County prior to issuance of the first, first building permit. Staff, however, is recommending denial of act, applica, of this application, given that the proposed future land use map amendment is incompatible with the adjacent commercial uses. Proposed amendment fails to identify how the residential use will sufficiently buffer from the existing commercial uses. And fails to identify how it will negatively impact the existing commercial leases. Finally, the proposed land use amendment package is consistent with the requirements of chapter one sixty-three of Florida statutes. Concerning the requirements for processing of future land use amendments and village staff to not receive any letters of objection from any of the review agencies. The local planning agency considered the application on June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty and recommended approval by a vote of three to zero. Village council considered this ordinance on first reading on June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty and recommended approval by a vote of four to one. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you and give the screen back to you, Ray.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. Before I go to the applicant, I just, hello? Better heard otherwise. Okay, I just want to share that I think all members of council have received this. There have been fifteen letters emailed to the village in support of this agenda item. And I have copies of letters here to insert into the record. I also received a copy of a petition. With five hundred and twenty-five signatures all in support of the project. And I think you all have received this also, there is an applicant that, uh, their own independent market analysis. Looking at the amount of commercial happening in the village versus residential. And that analysis indicated is, I know I stated at the last meeting that we, we don't need more commercial in the village, so. Uh, that information can be entered into the record, actually. Uh, Diane, okay, good. So with that, the applicant, now make comment from the applicant.
Yes. Again, Doug Murray with WGI. Yes, as Brad, as Bradford stated. This item was approved by council on June eighteenth. LPA recommended unanimous approval. It was transmitted to the state with no comment and now it's back for you for the second reading. So I do have the same presentation I prepared. On June eighteenth, if you, if you'd like me to go through it, otherwise I can, I can take any questions that you may have.
Does anyone want to see the presentation again? If not, um, then we're open for questions.
No, but could he, Doug, I don't know if you have it or Bradford has it, but to put up a slide that gives you the overall. Uh, proposed, like for instance, the watermark that you have on that screen now, if you just want to put that up so as we discuss, yep, we have a visual, thanks.
Hold on one second, with the, with the rendering of the, of the proposed plan or?
Correct, so that we can see the overall, that's fine right there, thank you.
Questions? No?
I'll go, go ahead, I'll go first, it's, you know. Just to reiterate the issues that were brought up and why staff is asking for denial, I completely understand the reasoning for making this residential versus commercial. Uh, that's not the problem. The problem that I have is moving forward is how many. Issues going forward, just as Bradford had reckoned, had noted, if we have to deal with. Recreation space, the open space, the parking, the landscaping, the entrance, the buffers, that's my only concern moving forward. To be very clear, as the last conversation that we had or the last meeting that we had, it was brought up as far as the entrance way. There's not sufficient offering that's going to be able to do that. It puts the onus now on the business to the north, the Dunkin' Donuts. That as he starts to redevelop there, he's going to be responsible for that, so it's pushing from this entrance way what needs to be done to another business owner. So those are my concerns moving forward. I do not have an issue zoning from, uh, commercial to residential. Thanks.
Richard? Sounds like a lot of what I had concerns with last time as well, but again, these are, are site plan issues and aren't things that really are before us tonight. I, you know, agree with a lot of what Selena said. That's something for, for another night. That looks, in my opinion, a little too intense, but again, I'm not deciding that tonight, I do. And, and I understand, and particularly with the market study which showed. Change from commercial to residential is probably a good way to go. That's all, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thanks.
So in agreement with two fellow council member's statements. It then turns to staff and the developers work on those issues and it is, it is going to be challenging, no doubt about it. Uh, but I have a lot of confidence in our, in our staff to be able to find a way, if at all possible, and. And hopefully there is a way to resolve some of these, which could be serious challenges, so. Again, for another night, but insofar as the change in land use is concerned. And, and with the additional information about commercial activity and. And property in, in Royal Palm Beach, my, my position is the same as it was for the first reading.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you. So I was, excuse me, in opposition of changing the land use during the first reading. But in light of this additional information, the market study, which I appreciate. Mr. Santa Maria taking out on his own, I appreciate the letters from. The commercial businesses and all the petitions. I agree with fellow counsel about how many hoops this project will have to go to, but I am now supportive of the project.
I, I think. What I mentioned before when we had the first reading, and I'll just make that comment again, that. The land, uh, the, the site plan development process, I asked both sides, both from a staff standpoint and from an applicant standpoint. Us to be creative. And, and trying to best address the, the issues that will have to be addressed to come up with a suitable, um, site plan. So with that. I'll ask, do we have any comments from the public? Any raise hands? Since this was the second reading, that's why I want to make the comment. Counsel.
I have no hands up.
Going once? Going twice? Going once, going twice. Okay. I'm closing public comment on the agenda item R3. Just to double check, the 15 letters and the sites, did the, the study, did we receive anything else? And then petition, other, okay.
That's it.
That is written to the record, and petition and all the other letters and everything else will be entered into the record.
Yes, it will be included in the record.
Okay. All right, well, then, open the comments from the council. I look for a motion to approve second reading.
And Mayor, I'll need to read the title into the record for the record.
Please do, sir.
Thank you. This is ordinance 1003, an ordinance of the village council, the village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, adopting an amendment to the comprehensive development plan in accordance with the mandate set forth in section 163, 3184, at sequence four of statutes pursuant to a privately initiated application number 19-120, which provides for an amendment to the village land use map designating 12.28 plus or minus acres, more or less of real property, as MFL dash multifamily low-density residential, which properties located northwest of the intersection of Oakwood Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, formerly known as Lakeside Landing, further providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing a conflicts clause, severability clause, and effective dated for the second reading.
Thank you. With that, I look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve regular agenda item R3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that the agenda item R50. Okay. Moving on, agenda item R4, is a public hearing for second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1002, approving application 19-127, an application by Kimberly Horn regarding a zoning tax amendment to chapter 26 of the village zoning code to allow an electric vehicle charging station as a necessary uses within certain zoning districts and establish supplemental regulations for new electric vehicle charging stations. Bradford, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a whole lot to add from that introduction. The applicant, the applicant is proposing amendment to the village zoning code, chapter 26, to allow electric vehicle charging stations as accessory uses within certain zoning districts within the village and to provide supplemental regulations. This is the second reading of this ordinance. The village council approved this unanimously, and so did the local planning agency. And with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant choose to make any comments?
No, I do not have any comments.
Okay. Are you satisfied with the petition provided by staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Diane, did we get any advance request for comment?
No comment received.
Nothing received? Ray, do we have anyone raising their hand?
No, we do not.
Going once, going twice. All right, I'm closing public comment on the agenda item R4. If there are no comments from members of council, since this is the second reading, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve regular, oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance 1002, ordinance of the village council, the village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, amending chapter 26 zoning article four supplemental regulations, section 2657, accessory uses buildings and structures, model homes and vehicle auction sales to add electric vehicle charging stations, allowance installation of electric vehicle charging stations in certain zoning districts, and provide supplemental regulations for electric vehicle charging stations, writing each and every other section, some section in chapter 26, sharing in full force and practice previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, severability clause, authority to codify effective date and for other purposes. This is second reading.
Thank you very much, Keith. I'm sorry I didn't get you beforehand.
I'll keep in mind it, yeah.
That's okay. All right. Did we have a motion and a second?
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show the agenda item R4 with approval 50. Agenda item R5 is a public hearing for second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1001, approving application 19-129, an application by Carmelo Mendez Lorano, Lorito, regarding a zoning tax amendment to chapter 26 of the village zoning code to allow adult daycare centers as a permitted permitted use in the general commercial zoning district and establish supplemental regulations for these facilities. Bradford?
Great, thank you again, Mayor. As you stated, the applicant is proposing an amendment to the village's zoning code at chapter 26 to allow adult daycare centers as permitted uses in the general commercial zoning district and provide supplemental regulations for these facilities. This ordinance was approved unanimously by the local planning agency as well as village council on first reading, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, does the applicant choose to make any comments?
Good evening, council members and mayor. This is Attorney Al Phillips on behalf of the applicant, Royal Palm Adult Daycare Center. We don't have much to add. We just appreciate your time this evening and reviewing our request for the second amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Diane, do we have any advance comments from the public?
No comment cards.
This, okay. Ray, do we have any hands raised?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Okay. I'm going to close public comment on the agenda item R3, and if there are no comments from members on council, since this is second reading, I'll look for a motion.
And I'll read the title.
And after we read the title, of course, I was just going to say that.
I know you are. This is ordinance 1001, ordinance of the village, chapter 26 zoning article two, construction of language and definitions, section 2622 definitions, to revise the adult daycare center definition to reflect applicable state laws in article five zoning district, section 2689 CG general commercial district, to add adult daycare center to the list permitted uses in the CG general commercial zoning district, and in article four supplemental regulations to add entirely new section 26 dash 60.1, adult daycare centers to provide supplemental regulations for adult daycare centers, writing each and every other section, subsection, chapter 26, generating a full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, severability clause, authority to codify effective date and for other purposes.
Okay, thank you, Keith.
Sir.
All right, with that, now I'm really.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item number five. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R50. I just have a question for the applicant. Now that this was approved, do you have a timeline on when you think this will be operational?
Hi, Mayor. This is Attorney Al Phillips. Once again, my client is on as well. I'm not sure if he unmuted or not. That's Mr. Mendez. I know he does have, still have to go through ACHA now that this has been approved. I know we have to wait the 30 days to get the letter, and then he will go to ACHA to work on those approvals.
Okay, good luck. Thank you.
Mr. Mendez is on the line, but he is self-muted.
He doesn't listen.
Mr. Mendez, you can unmute yourself if you want to, if you can answer that question. I guess not.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Okay. Agenda item R6 is a public hearing for the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 100, amending chapter 20, signs, signs of the code of ordinances of the village of Royal Palm Beach at article four permitted signs at section 20 dash 57, public ownership or other village-owned property in order to increase the size limitations for freestanding monument signs on village-owned property. Although it's the second reading, you're on.
Bradford? Thank you. Village staff is proposing to amend chapter 20 signs at section 2057 in order to increase the size limitation for any monument signs on village-owned property. This increased size limitation for the PO zoning district is consistent with the size limitations for freestanding monument signs in the other zoning districts within village code, I mean, within the village, at maximum of 42 square feet, a maximum of seven feet in height, and a maximum of eight feet in width. This ordinance was approved unanimously by the local planning agency as well as village council on first reading, and with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay. Diane, do we have any advance comments from the public?
No public comment.
Hey, do we have anyone with a hand raised?
No hands.
No hand raised? Okay. I'll close the public comment on agenda item R6. If there are no comments from members of council, this is the second reading, I'll look for a motion approved.
I don't need to read the title. Ordinance 1004.
You lost you.
Twenty signs of the code of ordinances, an article four permitted signs, section 2057, public ownership, district PO, or other village-owned property in order to increase size limitation for freestanding monument signs on village-owned property, writing each and every other section, subsection, chapter 20, sharing in full force and practice previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, severability clause, authority to codify effective date and for other purposes.
Very good, Keith. Thank you again. With that, I look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve regular agenda item number six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R6 was approved 50. Right, agenda item R7 is a public hearing for the first reading and approval of ordinance number 1005, amending chapter 17, offenses and miscellaneous provisions at section 17 dash three, public parks, in order to modify the hours of operation for public park in the village to be consistent with existing policies and procedures. Is Lou out there?
Lou is out there, and he is self-muted, so unless he unmutes himself, he won't be able to speak. So, we'll give him 10 seconds, and then I'll do it if he doesn't unmute. Five, four, three, two, one. Okay, Lou. You didn't figure out how to unmute your phone, so, or your computer, so I'm going to, I'm going to do this one for you. Where this came from is our current ordinance had sunrise to sunset, and that's not a specific time and is difficult for the police to enforce, so.
Kind of a moving time.
It's a moving time, and it's not an exact time. Well, it is an exact time each day, but it's different each day. So, it was a desire, really, for enforcement in the parks to have a specific time. Now, the time we picked, and we have in this ordinance, is eight to nine, and where the eight o'clock came from was the idea that we cannot get to the bathrooms, all the bathrooms and unlock them until eight o'clock, and the staff starts at seven, and then they are to all the bathrooms by eight and have them unlocked. The problem that causes is many people walk through our parks and use our parks for walking at sunrise, which is before eight o'clock. I do not have a problem if we change this, six to nine or six to 10, we'll just have to note that the bathrooms will not be open until eight, and that would take care of the problem of people walking at Commons Park or walking at any of the neighborhood parks before eight o'clock. I will say one more thing. The, right now, there is an order, accounting order for COVID that has parks closed from sunset to sunrise. That's a temporary order. This will be in place after that order is rescinded.
It's temporary. I don't know if it's the right word, but yeah, that's where we are now. I just have one question. If this ordinance is passed, we're not making a decision now in the time. That's something that you'll do after the ordinance is passed?
No, the ordinance has a time. It's a specific.
It'll have a specific time. Okay.
Right. And what we currently drafted in the first reading, though, was eight to nine, and in conversations, actually.
You've got to modify that. The additional.
Yeah, I think, I recommend that we change it to either seven to nine or six to 10. What's more important is if you have definitive times, parks are open and closed.
Keith, if we pass this ordinance first reading tonight, do we have to change, do we have to state specifically what the time that he's recommending now?
If you want to, you would, if you adopt it as written, it will be 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. If you want to change that, that needs to be, that change needs to be calculated tonight as part of the motion.
Okay, that's my thought. Okay.
Yeah. I'll go, because that was actually a point that I had as far as the time, because there are people who go early on and walk in the morning and everything, and as long as we do have it posted, the bathrooms are open between these hours. The other question, though, I just wanted to confirm with the Fair and Memorial Park, is that Monday through Friday, that is 5:00 PM?
Yes, and that's because of our agreement with the school board.
Okay, thanks. So, I can make a motion if you're okay with it.
Hold off on the motion. I got to find out from Diane, do we have any advance comments from the public?
No public comment.
Okay. Ray, do we have any hands raised?
Nope, no hands are raised. Not even Lou's hand.
I haven't moved. The computer's not working? All right, so I'm going to close, I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R7 and take further comments from council. I think who's next?
Doesn't matter.
Go ahead, Jen.
Okay. My question, well, alternatively, was about the closing time. Are we concerned at all about closing at 9:00 PM?
During the winter?
During the winter, when it's dark by six, and now we've got the park open still. My only question.
I was going to ask the same question, but I knew one of them would answer it first, ask it first, so. But are we able to say during certain times of the year, it's one time, another time of the year, because of the good stock, really, is a different time for closing?
Absolutely. We can identify that if we want to.
Can you hear me?
I mean, we can hear Lou now.
Ooh.
We could do that, or, and that's why I was saying nine or 10.
Can anybody hear me?
If there is a specific neighborhood park that we have.
No, I can hear you, but Ray is speaking right now.
If we have a specific neighborhood park that we have a problem, we can always, we can always change that in the future. Or we can, or we can definitely come back to you in the second reading with one that would be worked towards the length of the day, if that makes more sense.
Okay. If I think what I hear you saying is, you can't.
Can you hear me?
Keith, you guys can adjust the language. Hold on a minute, hold on a minute, Lou.
I don't hear.
Ray, you and Keith can adjust the language for a second reading, assuming it's closed tonight, which that will give us the latitude on what we're discussing here. Is that correct?
Correct.
Lou, you're on.
They're laughing, so they can hear me.
We can hear you.
We can hear you. Lou, we can hear you.
I don't think you can hear.
My question is particularly, I guess, geared towards commons and the baseball parks. Certain things go past nine o'clock. Some things may even go past 10, if it's rented out for a wedding. Is that going to apply or impact? Because all parks means all parks, or is there going to be an exception for if we rent out the cultural center or things along those lines? Because as long as there is an avenue to do that, then it's fine.
Yes, and there will be exceptions if Commons Park would be rental agreements and with the, with the ball field provider. Lou calling in?
Oh, I couldn't hear you at all. It's just talk. Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Still.
Okay, now I can hear you.
Oh.
Good.
That's good. So. So, you were saying, Lou?
The hours, hours aren't going to really affect anything. The, the ball fields, you know, if they got lights, actually, they're only going to have the lights because the village has scheduled them to use them. Other than that, at nine o'clock, the parks are officially closed, and again, PBSO a chance that if there are people lingering around, you know, they have, you know, they have the option of asking, leaving, letting them know that the park is closed. But, you know, and then opening up at eight o'clock, it's, the parks department comes in at seven, by the time they get all situated, get out and open all the restrooms and everything, that's why we set it at eight. It gives us an hour to get around to all the parks and get that, get everything opened up for the public.
Okay. That answer your question? Okay, that answer your question? Jen, Jen, same questions? Alright, did I close public comment on this? I think I did. Ray, did I close public comment?
I believe you did, you did ask for it and then there was nobody with their hands up.
Well, there are no further questions from members of council, this is first reading, I look for a motion to approve. Title.
Motion, if we're gonna change the time of what it says, I'll need to be specific on that motion.
Let me, it's, the motion needs to state that the, in the second reading, staff will come back with modifications to address the flexibility we need in time. Is that correct Keith?
You could do it that way, or if you have, if the maker of the motion wants to substitute it for a specific time, you know, change eight AM to six AM, you'd do that as well.
Seasonally.
Yeah, but one of the things that Ray wants to be able to do is change it season, seasonally.
So you could do it either way.
Alright, why don't we just ask for, for, for modified language to address the opening and closing? And then the language will explicitly explain.
Sorry, I guess this is another question probably geared towards Keith. Is, are we able to issue an ordinance that will impact county parks within the village and determine what hours they are gonna function?
If, if, if it's our, if we run the.
Like Calypso Bay, like Seminole Palms.
Or if they're the village.
Like the, like the parks in, well, over at the high school or.
If they're ours, if they're ours to operate, if we're operating them and maintaining them.
Yeah.
But if the, if the county is operating and maintaining them, that, that may be an issue.
Okay, but.
That's, that's what my understanding is, yeah.
Thank you.
You were making a motion? Selena?
I can do it, you want me to, and just do it with that, so we can keep the fair and park the way it is? Or you wanna change that one as well?
No, that one needs to stay the same because it's just in our agreement, board.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number seven with Baron Park open from five PM to nine PM, Monday through Friday. Saturday and Sunday from eight AM to nine PM and all other parks to be, have modified hours of operation from the staff.
I'm sorry.
Okay. That motion's okay Keith?
Clear enough?
What do you want me to do from six AM?
No, no.
I think it's clear enough, what we, I understand, what we.
And you guys will come back with modified language too.
We'll bring back the modified language.
Make that happen.
And obviously what we'll use is the longest day of the year is June twenty first, the longer, the shortest day of the year sunrise, sunrise, sunrise is December twenty first. So we'll, we'll give you something on three months on either side of those dates with a time change. So it would be one time change and it'll be three months on either side of those dates.
Okay. Can't wait to see the language on this. Okay, we have a motion in a second, I believe? Yes, we do, right?
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? We have no polls, Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R seven was approved on first reading, I heard. Agenda item R eight is approval of the conceptual design for the Southern Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection entry feature. And we'll be hearing from Mr. Marsh, are you there?
I'm here.
I have to make it, I'm, I'm doing that right now, Chris. Your panelist presenter, there you are. There you go, Chris.
My screen up?
Yes, you are, it's up.
Okay, great. So this project was first brought up in the twenty nineteen strategic plan meeting. It was a major project under goal three, beautiful convenient community. The project was then later added to the CIP in the twenty nineteen twenty budget for design and twenty twenty one for construction in amount of two hundred thousand dollars. We hired Cutler and Herring in October of twenty nineteen to redesign the existing entry feature that is located at the corner of Southern Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. There was a six person committee that evaluated the proposal that Cutler and Herring put forth. And it was composed of Ray Liggins, Chris Marsh, Paul Webster, Rob Hill, Lou Recio, and Adamo De Sisto. The group shortlisted that selection to two concepts. And then with a recommendation, this, this slide actually is the existing feature that you could see. The, the top slide is facing to the north, if you're exiting Southern Boulevard onto Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, this is what you would see. And then there's two zoomed in pictures. On the lower left hand corner is what you see coming from Southern Boulevard. And on the little right hand picture is what you would see if, if you were on Southern Boulevard, getting on to, on Royal Palm Beach Boulevard and then entering on to Southern Boulevard. Which currently isn't, doesn't have any decorations on it. This is option one, which builds, the committee, selection committee did, is recommending for approval. And, and we would repeat the, the village logo and, and architecture on, on the other side of the entry feature. So you would see it from both the north and south sides of, of the gateway. And then the next slide is option two, slightly different concept, which we also like, that was, that was our, our number two pick. And we are looking for direction from the council tonight on which option we want to finalize the design for and construct.
Okay, did you do a straw poll on this already Ray?
Yeah, there's a couple, I don't care, there's a couple.
Really?
Okay. Wait, let me rephrase that, there's a couple, they, they both look nice, that's what I meant to say. And, and then maybe a couple preferences.
Alright, before we go into it then, Diane, did we get any advance comments from the public on this?
No public comment.
Okay, Ray, has anyone got their hand raised?
Do I have to answer you honestly, it's Lou does.
Let's, let's hear what Lou has to say.
Oh, he just took his hand down.
Lou's not part of the public, but that's okay, but he certainly, if it's got input, we certainly love to hear it.
Always glad to hear what he has to say.
He took his hand down?
He took his head down.
Do we have no, no hand, no hand raised from the public, then I'm gonna close public comment on agenda item R eight. And I think you were first.
A question for Chris, I, I don't know. I don't think I asked Ray, this is either one of the options cheaper than the other?
I knew you would ask.
Yeah.
My guess is option two would be slightly more expensive because the, the additional metalwork.
Why'd you have to pick the one I like better, darn, thanks.
But it's not gonna be.
Thanks, thank you.
Number one has additional accents on the top of it that somewhat offset that cost, how much, and that's why Chris probably said just a little.
Yeah.
So the, the one, the one thing that strikes me about option two is that we have some sculpture out on the corner here. Which is representative of Royal Palm Fronds and this is similar to that. And I mean, that, that just, just appealed to me.
That was, I had a solid comment, some reaction. Finally wanna hear from Jen.
I, I like both options, I like the, this second option with the, the leaves in the palm frond, it adds a, a little bit more artistic element to it. In the first option, I know that the picture that you showed, there's a palm tree that's sort of, in the, in the real picture with cars on the street. The palm tree sort of hides the entrance.
That palm tree does not exist Jen, it's been taken down, but this is an old street view picture.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Sure of that. Yeah.
Okay. So that was my concern on the first, the first picture, but if it's not a non-issue, then I'll just, I do like the second option with the metalwork.
Okay, Selena.
Thank you to the committee of six men who narrowed it down from all of the choices.
Oh.
Fair.
Point well taken.
Oh, fair.
I, I like option one based on the fact that the logo is up higher and I do like the architectural detail right underneath the portico or the, the overhang from the, that. I do understand the thought process on the leaves, I do like the way that they look on that, I don't know if there's, and if it's gonna look too busy if you put the logo on the top and shorten those, the, the iron work to, so that the leaves look shorter underneath or how busy it would look. My other concern, not concern, but I really don't like the red or that burnt orange, if we could do maybe the blue, which our color is, or a different color is that, that really is what struck me is, kind of stood out on that. Both of them look very nice and I think the organization did a good job in narrowing it down, because I did see the others and these were the two nicer ones out of all of them, so.
So you're suggesting the ox have, be painted a different color?
I, I don't like that burnt orange or the red, I mean, if you wanna do the, you know, our colors may be blue, so if we do that in blue instead of the orange.
Alright.
And I just like the logo up higher because I think it's easier to see, but that, that I think conflicts with the, the iron.
Alright, so we got, we got two questions here, the first question though is, Ray, can we change the color to the rock?
Yes.
We have a blue, a Royal Palm blue that we would use?
We have, we have a Royal Palm blue, yes, we don't have blue on anything else that we've done, and the reason we, yes, it is that, that's the color. And the reason we picked, the reason we picked this color is that's consistent with the colors that we have at Commons Park and with some of the colors we're gonna have at the new village hall.
Okay, other than Selena, who has a concern about the color of the ox?
I honestly thought that, why not just keep it green, I think, it looks green, it's a green community, I mean, it's been green for many years.
Now we're getting really off.
And then secondly, well, it's green, so it's been changed, why not keep it the same? You would think, is there a reason for changing it or not, that's one thing.
Because I don't like the green.
And then secondly, I.
The story behind the green, I'll tell you one day offline, why we have all this green stuff, it's.
And secondly, I think the location of the logo on the second one is actually more visible, as someone who goes to that intersection every day. And it's more at eye level, as you're sitting there reading the sign, it's right there for people to see at their eye level as they're driving by or about to make that turn north, so. But I agree with Selena on the color, I would just say green.
Alright, so now we're making it, now we got color fight.
I'm not gonna fight.
Jeff, what are your thoughts?
That's why Richard should be not on the committee.
So noted, on the record. Jeff.
No, I'm not weighing in on colors.
Are you, the question, are you okay with the colors there?
I'm, I'm okay with the way it's presented.
Jen?
Yeah, let me say this, I like the idea of blue because it is our signature Royal Palm blue. I'm, I don't disagree with the green, but I think I do like the red a little bit better because it is consistent with Commons Park.
Okay, alright, so here's where it sounds like we are on the color of the, three of us okay with red color, two of you not, so we're gonna go with the red color.
So some have a better taste in color, that's fine.
That's okay, I'm just trying to.
And we won't identify who that is. And I said we won't identify who that is that has the better taste in color, we'll leave it alone.
Okay.
It was the, the all, all women's design team.
Somebody talking?
Chris, it's Chris.
That was me Fred, I said it was, it was the all female design team.
Okay guys.
Same up with the color concept.
We'll address that in another.
That explains it.
We'll address that, I have no question about it. I'd like to do a vote call, vote now on the.
One is it's my garden.
Option one or option two, I just wanna comment on option two, it's, when I first saw it, my reaction was, now that's us being true to our ordinance of, of our public places. Because it provides an art book to it and that we put some thought into that, so that was my vote for, for option two. Jen, which one, option one or two?
Option two.
Jeff, two. Two, Selena?
Is it too busy to add the leaves and the arch?
We're voting on this option right here.
Oh, option two.
We got four, okay, we got five, okay, so give me a official motion, for option two someone?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Well, hold it, that, procedurally, do I need to still get a motion?
We need it.
Get a roll call? Do I still need to get a motion, do I get a vote? Can you hear me?
Yeah, please.
I'm sorry Keith, what did you say?
I said yes, let's go ahead and do a motion please, I think Mr. Mayor made a motion.
Okay. Look for motion to approve option two?
So move.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And we have no polls, no polls?
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, Diane, please let the record show that we approve.
And opposed.
Option number two for agenda item R eight, five zero.
Diane, which one do you like better?
Approved, six zero. Okay, now we gotta be on that difficult decision. General item R nine is a product of two members to the education advisory board, Jeff, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have two vacancies that need to be filled and we have two applicants. And so I spoke with both applicants, I think Diane did also. And I'm, share some speci, more specific information that they shared with me than what you find in their application. The first one is Brittany Lee, who is a teacher and has actually worked for Palm Beach County School District for six years. She no longer works for the school district, she is now teaching at Temple Beth Torah School in Wellington. And so she definitely fits the criteria that we put out and looking for individuals who are educational professionals to serve on our education advisory board. The other applicant is a gentleman who identifies himself as DK Nelson. And Mr. Nelson is very new to the community, as a matter of fact, he moved to Royal Palm Beach in July of this year. It's interesting that he is so eager to get involved in a community that he volunteered his services on the education advisory board. His background in education is as an education consultant, where he advises on curriculum, achievement measures and policies in general. He's also been an evaluator of programs and policy effectiveness for schools, so he brings some considerable expertise as well. My motion is to appoint Brittany Lee to fill the regular seat and DK Nelson to fill the alternate seat on the education advisory board.
I just have one question, Mr. Nelson, do you have any contractual work with the school district?
No, he does not.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. But he's still actively consults?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, we have a motion. We need a second?
Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that the appointments recommended by Vice Mayor Hamara were approved by zero. And our next item is agenda item R10, which is an appointment of one resident to the Palm Beach County Water Utilities Advisory Board, as provided by Resolution R2006-0867 concerning the composition of this advisory board. That'll be the village manager.
The resident that's currently serving the ward wishes to continue serving on the board, and we recommend to continue his service on the board.
And what is his name again?
William Ness.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, Selena. Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that the appointment of the resident is the same individual as there now. It was approved five zero. Okay. I think we're, our agenda is done this evening. I'd like to thank everyone. And I'd like to thank the our technical team and staff. I think, do we feel like this was more productive than what we've been experiencing in terms of the not hearing people, et cetera? So, okay, so we'll continue, continue to refine the model. I think we've made some progress here. And I'd like to thank everyone participating and staff. And one last question. When's our next meeting? Diane? And now Tuesday, September 8th is the budget hearing. First hearing, right? Okay. So with that, stand adjourned. Thank you all.